I'd like to call the order, the November 4th, 2025, regular meeting of the Planning, Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. And Commissioner Walker, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So it looks like we have a full board with our alternate serving tonight. I'd like to take a minute before we get going and say a quick blessing over the meeting and turn off my cell phone. All right. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight to say thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask that you give us wisdom and discernment to make good decisions here as we go about the town's business. We thank you for this beautiful day that we've had and for this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. There we do. Okay, so item C is the consent calendar. Does anybody have any issues with the consent calendar?
No.
I can motion to accept.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, so we're gonna move forward to item B1, which is a conditional use permit, CUP 2025-04. This is a request by Southwest Contracting and Associates LLC on behalf of River Properties 2 LLC for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for a contractor's yard on a parcel zone light, commercial light CL located at 2995 North State Route 89, Chino Valley, Arizona 86323. Has anybody spoken, anybody about this project outside of this meeting? Hi Jessica, how are you?
Good evening Chair.
So we're ready for our presentation.
Great, thank you Chair. Good evening Vice Chair and members of the commission. My name is Jessica Barrigan, Senior Principal of Town and Chino Valley's Building Services Department. Before you sit down again is a request for conditional use permit submitted by Southwest Contracting and Associates LLC on behalf of River Properties 2 LLC to allow for the occasional outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment associated with wildlife mitigation and forestry contractor service. This request is brought to you as a case number CUP 2025-04. The property is located at 2295 North State Route 89 in Chino Valley and is most notably recognized as the former Shwan's Delivery Service Center, a mobile food delivery service who retired operations in 2023. For visual context, here's an image found of the property while in operation of the Shwan's dispatch and delivery service. You can see that the vehicles are there and there's no screening. The subject property is currently zoned, commercial light CL, and falls within the neighborhood commercial NC land use designation as defined in the Mega Chino 2040 general plan. Surrounding uses allow for contractor's yard with outside storage with approval of a conditional use permit per section 3.5 point C, point 6 of the town's Unified Development Ordinance. Adjacent zoning districts are likewise zoned, commercial light to the south and west, commercial heavy to the north, and vacant property is zoned to the east, AR5. The primary future land uses in that area support light industrial type businesses such as contractor's offices. The applicant's proposal indicates no changes to the existing footprint. It identifies the areas within the site designated for equipment parking along the southern boundary and demonstrates the installation of privacy panels on the existing chain link fence along the west and northern property boundaries spacing the highway and the street side. The proposed screening does conform with the town's fencing standards set forth in section 3.5 point E, point 7, and this includes all the screening at a minimum of 6 feet in height and storage that back more than 35 feet from the edge of pavement. Additionally, the applicant has committed to supporting the town's efforts to dark sky friendly exterior lighting and will provide staff with a lighting plan should any alterations be required. So as described, the primary function of the business consists of forest, wildlife, vegetation, and fuel management services with an office and dispatch center operating within that 42, existing 4,200 square foot building. The indoor storage is preferred, but an outdoor equipment, all outdoor equipment shall be screened according to the Unified Development Ordinance. The business hours are between 8 and 4 with one employee with supervised visits, occasional supervisory visits, and demonstrates a low intensity as compared to the previous tenant. All properties within a 500 foot radius were notified to attend a neighborhood meeting which was held earlier last month on October 1st, 2025, at the subject location. Zero neighbors were in attendance and there was no concerns over the CUP request. Staff does observe that the applicant has completed all applicable review and approval procedures set forth in section 1.9.3 of the town's UDO. There are no significant adverse impacts anticipated from allowing the use described on this property. Approval of the CUP further supports the business to be prepared in case of wildfire events and activities surrounding wildfire mitigation services. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the town council, a recommendation to approve conditional use permit, CUP 2025-04, as presented and subject to the conditions of approval and attachment A. On your screen are copies of the conditions of approval that can be found in your packet as well. And this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is in attendance and has nothing further to add, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for town staff while they're up there?
I just had one, just to clarify, the picture you showed doesn't have fencing, but there is current chain link fencing, correct?
Correct, there's chain.
And I'm just gonna add the privacy slats on the west and north side.
Correct, yes.
I believe they've done most of that, is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. How much equipment is gonna be there?
The narrative indicated three pieces of equipment. And the applicant provided a kind of a sample, so it would be occasionally there will be a camper on that strip right here. The strip is on the southern boundary, so this image faces southward. They also have some space inside, so any equipment that is not able to fit within the enclosed walls would be on the outside, so it would probably be... Oops. Let me pull up the site plan again. So you can see on the southern boundary here where it's yellow, where most of the equipment will be stored.
Any other questions? Thank you Jessica, we may ask you to come back up again.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move forward to the applicant. If the applicant's here, would you choose to speak? You are not required to.
The applicant has nothing further to add.
All right, thank you. Anybody on the board have a burning need to speak with the applicant? They don't give a... Very good. So we're gonna open up the public portion of this part of the meeting for this item only. If you have something to comment about this particular item on the agenda, please step up to the microphone, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to say your piece. If you step up, please be concise, polite, and obviously the first person won't be repetitive, but anybody else after that, if you agree, just say I agree with the person before me. So would anybody like to step up? All right, we're gonna close the public portion of the meeting. I'm assuming we don't have any more questions for staff. All right. No applicant with class, close the portion, public portion. I would entertain a motion for this CUP.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve conditional use permit, CUP 2025-04, as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval and attachment A.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion to approve, CUP 2025-04.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, I'll just call for a vote. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion's carried unanimously. All right, thank you for bringing more business to the town, we appreciate that a lot.
Thank you very much.
All right, Will, we're gonna do item D2, which is ZC 2025-02. This is a request by the town of Chino Valley for a rezone of approximately 197 acres of land from Business Park to public land. The land is located generally to the southeast of the intersection of Jerome Junction and East Road 4 North or Colorado Way, Chino Valley, Arizona. Assessors, parcel number 306-02-001USYXJ. Anybody on the staff talked to, or the commission talked to anybody outside the meeting on this item? No. All right. All right, Will.
All righty, good evening Chair, Vice Chair, members of commission. Will Denji, Assistant Director of Development Services. As read, the item before you tonight is a town initiated rezone of town owned land known as the Old Home Manor Business Park. This zone change is to a requested rezone from Business Park zoning to public land zoning. As introduced, these subject parcels, there's five total, total approximately 197 acres. They do hold that Business Park zoning. They are generally located to the south and southeast of the intersection of Jerome Junction and East Road 4 North, or otherwise known as Colorado Way. To the north is agriculture residential, four acre minimum, AR4. It is vacant with the exception of an APS substation here on their southwest corner. To the east and south of the subject properties is public land zoning. South is vacant, and then to the east we do have the Chino Valley Water Treatment Plant. Little further east, we do have the Equestrian Center along with some other municipal facilities out there as well. And then to the west, we have vacant industrial, commercial light, and then a little bit further down in here, we do have some local businesses, I believe two residential properties within this commercial heavy area. Yep, and then the general plan designation for the subject property in the surrounding area here is horizontal multi-use HMU, which will take us into what is an HMU? What are those? These guys came around with the 2040 general plan. Not a big fan of slides with a lot of words on there, I will not read all these to you, I promise, but there are a couple of key points to identify here. So the Old Home Manor Center is predominantly owned by the town of Chino Valley, but not the entirety. We own about 85% of the land designated by this within the general plan. The 15% are outside of the town's ownership. However, within each of these old, or excuse me, HMU designations, I believe there are six in the general plan, each of those call for specific things in those areas, whether it's specifically more commercial focused or a more residential focused, what like similar to what is the Uptown Center, kind of around too north, there is a commercial regional, commercial component to that, but then it also supports that higher density, that's where those pockets of residential developments were indicated through the 2040 general plan. While some of those bleed over between each HMU designation, the 2040 plan for Old Home Manor Center really calls attention to it being a planned employment district with commercial, recreation, education, and public service uses. Town's wastewater treatment plant, not for recharge area at Old Home Manor. The vision for the Old Home Manor Centers, which covers more land than what the town owns, is a master planned horizontal multi-use development that will include a list of compatible integrated mixed uses from low intensity Business Park, offices, medical services, municipal government functions, to regional and neighborhood commercial uses, parks, recreation, sporting uses, and tourism draws for events such as equestrian activity and then multifamily residential uses. Really wanna point out that parks, recreation, and sports uses, this is something that staff hears and council hears very frequently from residences, that Old Home Manor should be the focal point for Chino Valley for anything community related. If we, anything that gets people out there for that tourism, that, those sporting events whatnot, really should be housed at Old Home Manor if we can do that. The requested rezone, or staff initiated rezone from Business Park to public land, it's multifaceted. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna try to separate this item from the text amendment that comes after this, because there's a good deal of explanation as to why we want to delete the Business Park out of town zoning code. There's some zoning taboos that we'll kind of cover next, but as a whole, the Business Park designation now is really geared towards urban Business Park development, something that's not gonna organically happen here in Chino Valley. There's a lot of uses in there that are geared more towards college campuses that are adjacent that can support with research, development, uses similar to that of like campus wide commercial development, so what Phoenix is seeing with the TCM chip manufacturing, not on that scale, but to where a business is gonna come in and develop a core center business campus. That was really the intention with the Business Park. There are other uses within there, but that doesn't necessarily align with the general plan at this point in time. So the thought process now is to rezone to public land, which does have a stringent set of uses that are more geared towards that parks, recreation, and sporting uses. Within public land, there's that number eight use, which is that other uses as allowed at the discretion of council. So that piece in there is important, because if there is a business that does want to come in here organically to Old Home Manor on town owned land that's publicly zoned, the council still has the discretion to do so, to allow for that. So if we did have some manufacturer that was gonna bring a job center here, council thinks that that fits at the Old Home Manor, they can still approve it with the public land zoning. The idea is that with this rezone, public land, we're able to scratch the Business Park off the books for the town code, and then as part of the zoning code rewrite, we will have something that is more specific to these HMUs, specific to Old Home Manor, that better implements the general plan than what we currently have on the books now. So very long-winded explanation, I know there will be questions, so I'm just gonna keep moving through here. Key point two though is within the horizontal multi-use, it does allow for public land rezonings, so just wanna make sure that that does conform to the general plan there. The neighborhood meeting was held on October 1st, 2025. All subject, or excuse me, all properties were noticed within a thousand foot radius of the subject properties. Five neighbors were in attendance. They did list some questions and concerns, specifically over view, noise, buffers, and setbacks if Old Home Manor was to be developed. A lot of the land out there is still used for grazing, they wanna make sure that if anybody comes in here specifically like the RV park, which still could locate out here with council approval, that they understand that that would be budding up to people running cattle out in their field, cattle allowed, cattle smell, to understand that there will be impacts. Traffic and safety concerns are brought up specifically about the roads getting out to Old Home Manor, we all have driven those, they are not fantastic. Understanding that, hey, if we wanted a Business Park or a business to locate out there, or these recreational activities, we need to start looking at the road to get people out there. So we need to make sure that that's in good concern, or in good condition. Addressing infrastructure kind of ropes into the roads, but it also coupled in with water and sewer, we do have that out there, but not all parcels are watered and sewered, so make sure that the right use is going in the right location, which staff believes this rezoning to public land allows that opportunity to create more, a plan for essentially Old Home Manor that makes sense for the general plan that we have. And then there were concerns brought up over having, or council having discretion of what goes out there or what does not go out there. However, overall support for recreation was stated by the five neighbors that attended. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to town council, a recommendation of approval. I will go ahead and open it up for any questions or discussion from the commission.
You said that there are some tough things you're gonna go over after this?
So the next item after this is a requested text amendment that eliminates the Business Park zoning district from town code. So there are pieces in the Business Park zoning district, for example, we have a list of prohibited uses, which is a zoning taboo. We kind of went through that with the solar ordinance as to why you don't want to list prohibited uses in a zoning code, because to whoever wants to develop within the public, or excuse me, the Business Park zoning district, they will say, well, those are the only uses that are not allowed, so I can do anything else. So there's a lot of stuff that, as that being an example of one of them, there are a lot of development standards that don't make sense out here, and then the overall uses for the Business Park zoning district that just don't align with the general plan anymore. So, does that answer your question?
Why aren't we discussing that before we approve it?
So we can't discuss scratching the zoning district if, we did discuss this on order of this, if we are taking a direction on removing a zoning district that property holds, there needs to be, so if we remove a zoning district and the property is still entitled that, we need to make sure that it's no longer entitled if it's going to be removed. Does that make sense? You can't, it's like a chicken or the egg situation.
So what you're saying is the text amendment just eliminates it completely, but we have to deal with this first in order to put it back to public lands, which I think that's what it was originally.
Correct, yes sir.
When the decision was made to try to put businesses out there, that's how this came about.
Correct.
And I was, I remember a lot of discussion on trying to figure out how to keep everything out of there we didn't want, and we sort of were directed to go about it in the wrong way, I believe.
I think based on the direction from the research that I've seen on the Business Park, it was done as directed and it, you know, fit at the time.
Correct.
That is no longer the case.
Yeah, because the general plan plus it didn't seem to generate a whole lot of interest out there with that designation, so. Okay, any other questions?
Do you have a satellite view to reference where the Equestrian Center and the college are out there?
Yeah, let me... So in reference here, the Equestrian Center, about this, their lease is almost identical to what we have here in the shape they own, they essentially leased this whole, actually it's just a no, they don't go up the college, and then the Avaply College is here. This is the Chino Valley Roads Yard.
So the U shape that's exempt from the zoning now, what's that? Is that where the Equestrian Center is at?
Is the Equestrian Center part of the Business Park?
She's talking about the notch in the red lines, right there.
No, Equestrian Center is over here. This is our wastewater treatment plant. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Will, we may ask more in a minute. All right, so we're gonna open the public portion of the meeting for this item only. Again, the same comments as on the first time we opened it up. If there's anybody here that chooses to speak, you get three minutes. Anybody wanna speak? Yes, sir. Your name is Chris Marley, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I heard my picture's still out there, enough reels here. Probably got eyebrows drawn on it. I won't take the full three minutes. I live probably as close to Old Home Manor as anybody could. I live right across the street from it, and when we first put this Business Park in, went from public land to Business Park. It was a time when the town wasn't that excited about jobs coming in. A lot of folks said, if you wanna work, go to Prescott, go to Prescott Valley. And we put the Business Park in with the hopes that we could get an anchor business in there and go from there. While I was serving the town, we had a block company come in, but they wouldn't, it was like an aerated concrete company, and they had a really neat product, but we didn't have high pressure natural gas over there. We had water, we had sewer, we had power, but we didn't have the natural gas. There were several other businesses that took a look at us. Unfortunately, most of those businesses went on over to Texas. My desire when we did that Business Park was to have, the picture's gone now, but on the north end, since the wind comes out of the southwest, all your heavy industry up above to the north of the wastewater plant, and then light industry to the south of it. I don't mind the sound of forklifts at night, it's people putting bread on their table. I think that's a good thing for the town, and it'd be nice if we didn't have so many taillights going into Prescott and Prescott Valley every morning. That being said, it sounds like you guys have a plan to where you can have businesses there if someone to locate. That's cool. Like I said, I live close to it, I don't mind the sound of forklifts, I like the sound of people working. As far as entertainment, we, wow, those seconds go to zinging, don't they? Anyway, as far as entertainment, we wanted all the noisy entertainment out on the east end, like the rifle range and the horse range and all that. That being said, thank you guys for what you're doing. If businesses come in, please welcome them. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? All right, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting for this item. Is there any questions from the commission, from the staff, people?
I got one for Will.
Will?
Prior, as the Business Park, the town owned the land, what was the intention under the Business Park? Was, if a business came in, was the town gonna sell its land to the business, or was it gonna be a lease option?
I think either were on the table. So if we look at the RV park for example, that is going to be a sell, but we had courted a lot of businesses that we floated lease options to, I think that's where it originally started. Obviously, nothing happened based on that, but it seems that it was either lease or sell, there are both options.
And if it's designated to public land, and as you said at the council's discretion, would it be a lease or a sell option depending on what they do with that type of zoning? Would the land obviously have to be rezoned to what the business, if the business wanted to come in there?
So absolutely a great question. Typically, you don't have privately owned public land, but we do in this town. So it's, I would say for Chino Valley, you can own privately owned publicly, public land zoned pieces of property. So in this case, it could be a lease or a sell.
And so if like the RV park were to come in and they purchase that land, are they gonna have to rezone that public land, or will whatever they choose to put there falls underneath the use?
Council discretion.
Council discretion. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve zoning change, ZC 2025-02, as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing, and the conditions of approval and attachment A.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? All right, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Diddo?
Yes.
Alternate Moravito?
Yes.
Commissioner Metters?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paceyak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously, thank you. And thank you, sir, for speaking. Liven it up a little bit.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward with item D three, which is TA dash twenty twenty-five dash oh six, a request to amend the town of Chino Valley Unified Development Ordinance, chapter one fifty-four, chapter three, section three point one nine, to remove the business park zoning district in its entirety. Has anybody spoken to anybody outside of this meeting about this item?
No, I, I had a, I had a discussion with staff, it was minimal as to definition.
Okay, anybody else?
Right. Will?
Hello, okay, Will. Staff presentation.
Alright, good evening. Yeah, we're, we're good. Good evening again, and so now we have the opportunity to talk through the more technical stuff as to, we have the general plan, we have what the general plan calls for the Old Home Manor Center horizontal multi-use. And now we're gonna talk about the zoning district of the business park itself, and why staff really is pushing for this removal. We have had discussions on, is it best to remove this? Is it best to put it into that section three point two zero obsolete zoning districts like we did with the zero point one six? To kind of start there, no. The intention is not to, or the desire would not be to put this into the obsolete zoning districts like we did with the zero point one six, and that's because of this item prior, the rezoning. Those one hundred and ninety-seven acres, five parcels, are the only land within Chino Valley town limits that hold the business park zoning. Our position, staff's position is that the business park is not a, is not compatible with current Chino Valley in the general plan, and additionally, the language that outlines the business park is not, God, I'm trying to find a better word on this. There's a lot of zone, there, there are zoning taboos as, as part of it. Prohibited use list, and then it goes really in-depth on a lot of performance standards in here for the business park. Has that prohibited use deal, talks about having separate development standards for within the business park that are different from overall development standards within the zoning code. It's kind of like its own development code within a zoning district. It's, I.
Yeah, most of the uses really aren't viable when you look at plugging a couple of these out and sticking them at Old Home Manor, it's not really a fit. So the goal is through our rewrite of the zoning code, we come up with a district that could accommodate these kinds of uses and not include other uses that can work at Old Home Manor. So we're not eliminating it forever, we're just getting rid of this faulty zoning district for us. And then we don't have to worry about someone coming in and saying, I want to locate it Old Home Manor because I have a, let's pick one. Welding and machine shop, because it says I can do that out there. Oops. That's not really what we really want out there.
So a, as Lori said, the idea is, is to completely scratch this, and then as part of the zoning code rewrite, we will have a specific, whether it's called business park or a more of an HMU-designated zoning district that encompasses what the general plan wants in these areas. And it might be a couple of, you know, this is the HMU district for Old Home Manor zoning district. This is the HMU zoning district for Uptown Center, or things like that that are more specific, more targeted, and more aligned with that twenty forty general plan. I feel like that's about most of it.
Yeah, Will was talking about the prohibited uses list. The problem with having a prohibited uses list is you can never think of every single thing that you do not want out there.
Correct.
And you will find, someone will come in and say, well, it doesn't exactly say that. Then, then we have a battle. So the idea is that you don't list prohibited uses. All you do is list specifically every single thing that can come in, and then leave an area for either the zoning administrator to say, yeah, that use is similar, or the ability with someone who comes in with something that isn't quite there to go through a conditional use permit process, so we go through the public process, we vet it, and it's either a yes or no.
So, kind of really concludes staff's presentation on that. We'd love to open it up for dialogue questions.
Anybody have questions for the town staff?
So it'll still stay as an HMU?
U- under the general plan, yes sir. Yep.
So basically, it sounds like by removing this, we have a clean slate to help the new zoning ordinance work to be done in a proper manner.
Yes, sir.
So this will default back to public land?
No, so this will just get that zoning district off the books. The item before this, the requested zone change, will get rid of the only land in Chino Valley that is owned business park. That'll get it to public land, and then not allow this to be deleted.
So Will, the list that's up there that we're all looking at now, is that's what's going to be eliminated?
The whole entire section, three point one nine, business park. So it'll be everything here from, starting at the section three point one nine, the purpose statement, all the way through number, letter G, ten on performance standards for the businesses that were to locate out there.
Any other questions? Alright, we're gonna close the public portion of that item, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve text amendment TA two zero two five dash zero six, as reflected in attachment A, subject to staff report, information provided during this hearing, and the Planning and Zoning Commission discussion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I should have the motion for TA two zero two five dash zero six?
Alright, we have good seconds. Alright, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi?
Yes.
Alternate Morbeto?
Yes.
Commissioner Dida?
Yes.
Commissioner Matters?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pasiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes.
So that gives you an opportunity now to keep us out of the weeds. Alright, thank you. Okay, do we have any action items? I don't believe so. Okay, so now we come to item F, which is information items, and F one is staff.
Alrighty, good evening again.
What's your name?
I don't remember. So, action items for what went to council last meeting. We did have the conditional use permit for the Living Waters Church for their electronic message center sign. That was approved by town council. And then we did have, it didn't come to you because it was a town, direct town code amendment, but it was regarding adjacent right-of-way maintenance, specifically for, if you have a piece of land, you have your property line, and then there is a space of land between your property line and pavement or edge of curb or sidewalk. And, you know, whether it's a utility line area or a drainage easement, essentially an area that grows weeds. We had it in code that you, prior to twenty nineteen, that you were responsible as a property owner for maintaining that adjacent strip of land. When the, then staff rewrote the property maintenance code, that piece fell off. We were still enforcing that you were to maintain to the edge of pavement, edge of right-of-way, and then we realized, hey, that actually is not in code anymore, we got challenged on it. Couldn't do it, and so we brought that back to town council, and then they ultimately approved it. So we do have that on the books now again.
That's, that's a pretty common, that's a pretty common requirement, if I'm not mistaken.
You are absolutely correct.
That includes trees now, right?
No, so it is just the ground. So trees and whatnot will still be the responsibility of town of Chino Valley streets. I have no more.
Is that it?
That is it for updates.
Alright, thank you, Will. Okay, so item F two is an opportunity for the members of the commission to speak about things that they have on their minds. Would anybody like to say anything? Alright, so we'll move past that, and it comes to the chairman. Fortunately, the chairman doesn't feel vociferous. But I will say that I appreciate the town staff and the efforts that you guys have made to help clean up some of the stuff. A lot of it was unintentional, but just so many people dealing with it over the years. It's kind of like barnacles on a ship. So thank you for that, and also would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. So we come to item F four for the public to speak. You may speak on anything that is not on this agenda tonight. You get the same rules as the other items. Would anybody like to step up and tell us what is on their mind? Alright, now the public chose us to remain silent, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.